All right, good evening. I'm going to call to order the January 7th council meeting. And would you please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And item number three is roll call.
Counselor Baybine?
Present.
Counselor Donovan?
Here.
Counselor Hayes?
Here.
Counselor Blais?
There.
Counselor Chair Holbrook?
And I am here as well. Both Jean Marie Katharina and Counselor Kate Sinclair are home with the flu. And Mr. Hall is just returning to us from having the flu. So item number four is general public comments. And before we dive into that, I did just want to ask there is a young man here with us tonight that is working on his merit badge for his Boy Scout. So if you would like to come on up to the podium.
My name is Zach Harrison. I'm from a Boy Scout Troop 47 here in Scarborough. And I'm coming here to work on my communication merit badge. And thank you for letting me join or be a part of this meeting.
Good luck.
Thank you, good luck.
All right, and as usual with general public comments, you have three minutes. If anybody would like to come to the podium and speak and state your name, address, and there is three minutes. And, which is great, we're going to have a short meeting. We'll close general public comments. And item number five is minutes of the December 17th regular meeting. Is there a motion?
Move approval, second.
And is there any discussion, errors, admissions? All right, and all those in favor? That is unanimous. There are no adjustments to the agenda. And so we move to item number seven, which is items to be signed, treasurer warrants, which I will do later in the evening, which brings us right to number eight, non-action items. We have a presentation from the Maine Department of Labor to present the town of Scarborough with the SHAPE Award. And joining us to do that would be Mike LaPlante and Stephen Greeley, if I'm not mistaken. So if you wouldn't mind, please come up and talk to us a little bit about what we did to get the SHAPE Award.
Well, my name is Mike LaPlante. I'm a manager with the Workplace Safety and Health Division of Maine Department of Labor. Some of you have probably heard of us. We have the famous enforcement division that shows up unannounced and does the OSHA inspections, which is a hugely popular program. And we're quite good at what we do. But back in 2005, our former director kind of copied a program from federal OSHA, which was called SHARP. There's always people in the private sector, employers in the private sector, that were doing a very good job going out of their way to follow the regulatory texts to protect their people. And our boss, his name was Dave Wacker, at that time decided to start what they call the SHAPE Program, which is the safety and health awards for public employers. It's an R and D. We basically cut a rip off and duplicated the federal program. But whenever we find an employer that we feel is trying to do what they need to do to comply, and there are those out there, we suggest they get into this, what we call the SHAPE Program. And basically, in a nutshell, it requires scrutinizing your injury records to see if there's opportunities to help. We casualty your injury records and compare them to other employers of similar type in the states. Your injury records, right off the bat, have to be at or below the state average for other cities and towns. We'll come in, we'll look at all the written programs of all the departments, training records, equipment inspections, facility walks. And I'm sure that some of the folks on the sidelines can probably attest it was a process. But anything worthwhile generally is. So if an employer gets into the program, their injury rates look good, and we go in and do a wall-to-wall, give them a chance to correct, and they do, we get to this point. We're here tonight to award the town of Scarborough, excuse me, the coveted safety and health award for public employers. And though this is number forty, there's forty-four employers as of tonight in this program since 2005, so we don't give these out lightly. I think Scarborough is the sixth, if I recall, employer that has done all town departments, which it's, I was talking with the chief earlier, it's sometimes easier for a smaller employer to get in, less injuries, less employees. So a town of this size is actually, I think, monumental. I think it's probably the biggest town that we've got today. It's only six in the state that have done every single department, which is a big deal. So, and I'm going to, if I step away just for a sec. We have letters from our commissioner and director and Steve, basically, in a nutshell, covering, what, sorry, Steve. Covering the basic stuff that we look at. And there should be a bunch of them for you to give out. So I'm going to just pass the podium over to my boss, Steve Greeley.
Well, first of all, congratulations. You know, as Mike mentioned, as far as the Workplace Safety and Health Division, we do have the enforcement piece, so we are the OSHA for the public sector. But as he mentioned, we also have the Popular Safety Works piece, which is consultation for public and private sector companies. Mike had mentioned the SHARP Program. In the state of Maine right now, we have sixty-eight private sites that are SHARP certified. And if you were to look at the rest of Region One, which encompasses the six New England states, we have more SHARP sites in Maine than the other five states combined. So I mean, it's a very active, active program. And Mike had mentioned about our, my predecessor, Dave Wacker, who had started the SHAPE Program. There has been some discussion with Connecticut and also Massachusetts about doing something similar for the public sector in those states. But, and actually, I had discussions probably a month or so ago with a person from Massachusetts that would actually like to keep the same name so they could kind of maybe grow the program so it's more of a recognizable name throughout New England. But today, Maine's the only one in New England that does this. And as Mike mentioned, we're at forty-four locations. The SHAPE Award, and probably the, and there's a lot of work involved to achieve this and to be, as Mike mentioned, a town your size to get this is phenomenal. The, but I always feel like when I get to this point, I'm kind of moving the finish line on you. I mean, it's like, okay, let's celebrate tonight. This is a great achievement. But these little plates at the bottom of the plaque are for renewal. So, you know, celebrate tonight, but starting tomorrow morning, the work continues. So I'm not sure who to present this plaque to, but again, congratulations. Is there, um, okay?
All right, please.
And on behalf of the governor's office and my commissioner's office and so on, usually we have a few more people in attendance from the Department of Labor. But as you know, the inauguration was tonight for the governor and my commissioner and my bureau director are at that event. So again, like I said, they do send, you know, their best wishes as well, but unfortunately, they weren't able to make it tonight.
If you'd like to come, have you come right up here? And we'll shoot out of your way and...
Yeah.
You're the force.
That's probably what you called her the other day.
Mr. Flack and the handshake.
That's cool.
Gary.
Gary.
You give my good side, Mike. I think that's to the left. No, no, listen, you guys deserve it. So you are the boss. I just don't want to admit it.
I'll salute. Thanks so much.
So one thing I did mention, getting into this program gets you out of the enforcement program unless something unfortunate happens. So as long as the town stays into the program, you've eliminated yourself from enforcement activities unless something happens out of the ordinary. So the challenge is on. Keep it going, so. And that's, I think, the big positive. You don't get to see my folks, so.
I just wanted to say, I've not been on the front line of this, but during my tenure, I know this has been a constant battle for our goal of staff and a challenge, frankly. And we very much appreciate Mike's work and patience with us. And it's really the folks in attendance here tonight that have had the perseverance and the tenacity to see this through. So now that we've reached the hurdle, we hope that renewal will be far easier than getting this award. And I appreciate how you've come out and celebrated that with us.
Easier to maintain it than let it go behind. So it's all good. And it is a big deal to us, and I know it is to you. So thank you again, folks.
Thank you.
Great, thank you.
And fantastic and wonderful job to really our talented staff. That's, this is you. It's not anybody else other than, it's you. So congratulations and good job.
It's great leadership, thank you.
My name is Lance Lemieux. I'm from Maine Municipal Association. I'm the loss control consultant that works with the town. And five years ago, this whole process started with them. I did their, I used to work for the Department of Labor. And I wasn't sure they were going to get to this point. And when I got the email a few weeks ago or last month that they were going to get the award, I was very excited. I think, if you don't mind me picking on the Public Works, I went to the Public Works that first time. I think I had eighty-three violations. And I shook my head and I said, oh, okay. But you should be very proud of them. They've done a great job. Where the town has gotten the entire, all departments in the town have gotten the SHAPE Award, are in the program, you get a three percent discount on your workers' contributions, I'm sorry. So, great job and don't worry, I won't let them lapse. You'll get all those. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so we're going to go ahead and move on to our next order of business, which will be...
Order number fifteen double zero one is seven P.M. public hearing in action on the request for a liquor license from Happy Buddha, Inc. Doing Business Chase Inn located at 456 Payne Road.
All right, and this is a public hearing. Is there anybody that wishes to speak on this item? All right, seeing none. Pleasure of the council.
Move approval, second.
And is there any discussion? All right, seeing none. All those in favor? All right.
Under old business, order number fifteen double zero two is act on the names that were posted to the various committees and boards that were posted at the last town council meeting by the appointments committee.
All right, is there anybody that wishes to speak? All right, seeing none. Opportunity lost.
Move approval, second.
And any discussion? All right, seeing none. All those in favor? On to the next one.
Under new business, order number fifteen zero zero three is the first reading and scheduled public hearing on the proposed amendments to chapter seven oh two, the town of Scarborough Street opening ordinance.
All right, and is there anybody here that wishes to speak on that item? And seeing none. Pleasure of the council.
Move approval, second.
And any discussion?
I have a question. The largest substantive piece that I saw was the increase in the liability coverage. And I was wondering what was the driving force behind, I think it was increasing from three million to four million dollars in liability coverage?
Mike Shaw is the architect of this. I would mention, in the absence of Counselor Kate Sinclair, who's the chairperson of the ordinance committee, this matter was taken up and approved by the ordinance committee at the last meeting and before you now. So Mike can answer your question.
I believe that the, it goes, it went from three hundred thousand to four hundred thousand.
Oh, I might have read too many, okay.
And that's simply just a function of tort liability.
Okay.
And the amount of coverage that the town needed to be indemnified against. So that was, that was that. And then the other piece, while I'm up here, the other, the last time that ordinance had been updated was nineteen ninety-six. So the, one of the other bigger pieces in there is, at that time, the dig safe means, dig safe law was not in effect, it is now. So there was wordsmith, changed that as well. So that was another big piece of that.
Thank you.
Can I ask you, just to kind of quickly, I did attend this meeting, but I don't recall. I was only a viewer. I didn't have to know everything. But would you mind, with Kate's evidence, if you could just kind of go over briefly what the highlights were? It was mostly of...
Sure. The highlights, the bigger pieces were the, was the change in the tort liability limits of coverage. There was the, also, there is a piece in there about the dig safe, which is, I think, one of the larger pieces. And then beyond that, there was removal. At one time, we, the ordinance spoke of the actual Public Works doing repair work at the request of a contractor that was doing a street open. As a practical matter, we never did that prior to, prior to me showing up there. We certainly haven't done it since. You know, anybody that is doing a street opening and is actually breaking pavement and so forth is a contractor of size and ability that they're going to want to do their own repairs and restorations, and that's the way we would want it anyway. So it was just, it was a matter, it was a lot of house cleaning in the ordinance when I did the updates as well.
All right, any other questions or discussion?
Just so that everyone who's kind of watching, this is updating an ordinance that deals with excavating in public ways.
Correct. Within the town's right of way, yes.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, I think that was, could have been lost on people watching.
Thank you, Bill. And anything else? No other discussion? No other questions? All right, thank you very much, Mr. Shaw.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right, so this is first reading and schedule a public hearing. So we have a first and a second. All those in favor? None, as you need them.
Order number fifteen zero zero four is act on the request to appoint the town clerk as registrar of voters pursuant to the title twenty-one A Maine Revised Statute, subsection one oh one point two. And this is just, every two years, the state requires us to appoint the registrar of voters.
Thank you, Tony, for always doing that. Is there anybody that wishes to speak on this item? And seeing none. And the pleasure of the council.
Move approval, second.
All right, and any discussion? All right, and seeing none. All those in favor? So now we are on to standing and special committee reports and liaison reports. And we'll go ahead and start on the sense with Sean.
So a couple items. One, finance committee was to have met this past week. We were not able to do that. And this was the joint meeting with school board's finance committee because of some absences and illnesses. So we're in the process of rescheduling that joint meeting. Tentatively, we have set the first meeting of the finance, the town council's finance committee for January fourteenth at four here in chambers. It's a very light agenda in which we're reviewing the fiscal year-end internal reports. And then we should hopefully have at least a draft timeline for discussion as well. The town is currently in the midst of its audit with the auditors. So we're taking it a little light at the moment to ease their schedules. Did one mention, I attended CEDCO, so I don't know who to report, but Mr. Donovan and I both attended the last CEDCO meeting. The January fifteenth meeting has been canceled in the schedule, but there are several other activities that are going on and supporting them. And then also ECO Maine, their next meeting is January fifteenth. No. Yes, fifteenth. And so I should be able to attend that with Mr. Shaw as well. So those are my reports.
Thank you very much. And Mr. Donovan?
The CEDCO meeting was the only one which I attended and I think Counselor Baybine has adequately covered it.
And Mr. Blais?
Only meeting that I went to was the, it was a planning board meeting this past Monday. And the FOSH organization did get up and present a, you know, call it a sketch plan or something like that. And the planning board was very interested in the location and gave them quite a bit of direction as to what they expect to see in forthcoming reviews. It's going to, it's not an easy piece of land. And there's going to be a lot of, a lot of pressure to make sure it's done correctly. So that's all I got.
All right, and Mr. Hayes?
Mine will be very short again. The committees I'm on have, between the holidays and cancellations, have not met. But they will be meeting next week, so I'll have some updates the next time around.
All right, and off to me, which is, as you can see, the portion of, first leg of historic preservation was here in front of us tonight. They met last night, and I'm sure they will take all the feedback that they received tonight and have something for us, possibly for next month, for our first reading. Housing Alliance did need to change their meeting. They will not be meeting tomorrow. It's been rescheduled. I believe that's Thursday, January fifteenth, next week. And they'll be taking up several items and discussion on some of the other goals that we've talked about that were coming in pieces. We recently, as a council, changed the percentage thresholds that we have for definitions. They'll also be looking at some of, looking into other zoning as far as expanding some of those affordable programs into other zoning and those sorts of things. So they'll be continuing those discussions. And that's it for my committee and liaison report for now. So skip over to Tom for our town manager report.
Yes, I apologize. I've been out ill three days this week, so I don't have much to report. Just quickly, an update on the dredge project. The last status report I received was just before Christmas. The contractor reported at that time they were two and a half weeks ahead of schedule. So I think by now, they're probably close to wrapping up the project. Over the holidays, I did go down onto Western Beach and saw the dune replenishment that's going on and the dune shaping. So that project is well on its way to completion and certainly pleased to report that. And also, for the benefit of the council, and I don't mean to steal the thunder of the chairperson, I was successful in arranging for some training for us all, for counselors. And I may have invite a number of my staff as well tomorrow here in these chambers. At three thirty, we have Phil Saucier from Bernstein Shore that's going to be providing Freedom of Information Act training, which is required of all public officials annually. I think he's also prepared to provide some basic overview on executive sessions, and this is really more for the council. And generally prepared to talk about our former government and those sorts of things. So this was at the suggestion and request of the chairperson. And I think it's something that we might look to do annually. Phil is uniquely qualified. He does provide the four-year training statewide, so he's certified in that respect. And I think it's, that's a piece of information that might be helpful to some of my key senior staff people, too. So if you don't mind, I may extend that offer out to them as well. So again, tomorrow at three thirty. And I would expect within an hour, we can wrap this up. So that's it for this evening.
All right, on to council member comments. Item number eleven, we'll start on the other end with Mr. Hayes.
Good evening, everybody. I guess what I'd like to invite you, part of, part of when I was running for council, what I really wanted to do is try to create an open process and really, you know, my opinion is we're kind of here to serve everybody that's out there. So please, as we're meeting, if things come up, if things you want us to put on the agenda, please let us know. Please get in touch with us. We'd love to hear from you about things that you want us to consider about Scarborough. So please get in touch with us and give us your thoughts. Thank you.
And Mr. Blais?
No comments.
All right, Mr. Donovan?
I'll relate a story that probably all of us have experienced. In the wintertime, you know, recently retired, time on my hands, I decided rather than going to the mall to take a walk, I would go to Walmart to take a walk. And was touring, touring the perimeter of Walmart when a gentleman passed me and said, geez, I was really disappointed in that boat that you casted. And I said, oh, okay. And it just reminded me that there are people out there who, they'd like to know, why did you do that? And they didn't get an adequate explanation necessarily from the lack of exchange or dialogue that this process sometimes provides. And I want people out there to know that, and I've had this happen with the last tax budget, where people in my neighborhood said, why'd you do that? Why did you proceed as you did? And we had a good exchange. And I want people to know that my, our emails are all out there, phone numbers are out there. And I, I think it's better that you ask the question so that you actually know why. Because sometimes the opportunity to fully understand just isn't presented, whether it's by the newspapers or the discussion that we take. So I'm, it just kind of reminded me of how important it is to let people know we're all prepared to have that sort of discussion, to explain our views.
Thank you, Bill. And Sean?
Thank you. Happy New Year, everyone. I hope you had a good holiday season, great comments. I did want to mention that, so we had a workshop this evening. First, I really wanted to thank the Historic Preservation Group. That was very, very informative, very useful. One of my dear to my heart organizations has one of those buildings on that list, which is the American Legion Building down in Vincent Libby Road. And it's been a lot of things, including the pilot training barracks, but I'll have to tell you those jokes later, back in the roaring twenties especially. And then the second piece is that I think that the second workshop that we had shines a light on an opportunity for us to, while we might have the best intentions in crouching policy, sometimes the implementation of it just falls away and falls apart. And I think that if anything, we've been shown that this probably is one of those policies, because I was actually hoping, by the time I heard the story, we should have given, I mean, personally, I would have said, given the manager the authority to move forward, accept the tax collection check from the resident or the owner of the property and just moved on. So I hope that we really look at minimizing government and making our processes more efficient.
That's it? All right, so on to me. So I do just want to reiterate, as Tom mentioned, we do have training tomorrow at three thirty. Also, I think you'd be interested to know, Tom and I did meet briefly this evening to catch up. We will have the second part of our goal-setting workshop. That will be on January twenty-first, which is a Wednesday evening, prior to our council meeting at six. So we will be going over the goals just to review. And we'll have those sent out ahead of time to each of the counselors. And we will go through our sticky dot process, as well as a review of prior year goals. So now that we have that nice and firm up...
Will we get that done in an hour?
Um, we are going to...
Try.
We are going to try. The other possibility is if we do have a light agenda, we may just forego the council meeting and have it as a goal evening, if there's nothing too pressing. So we shall see. And then last but not least, I did just want to share, I was trying to diligently find the document and I had lost it, that our water company, our local water company, has made a very gracious donation to the Scarborough Food Pantry in the sum of, I believe it was one thousand dollars. There were several communities that also received that, that the Water District serves, but Scarborough was also one of the recipients of that. I think that was just absolutely outstanding of them, you know, in these times where resources are dwindling and shrinking and the services for the needy are being strapped, these local pantries and these local efforts become, you know, more and more in need of help and support. So I did want to just give the shout out in a kind and generous offer and say that it's really appreciated. And with that, I will actually wrap up my comments for this evening. And so item number twelve is...
Could I just ask for, I forgot to mention something. It, I was made aware from Chief Thurlow today that Tony Tardo Senior passed away. And Tony, for those of you who didn't know, was a well-established businessman in town, all-around terrific guy, just a principled man, served on this council, probably more influential in his later years as the morning coffee clutch here at McDonald's. I would often get an airfold when I would stop in and catch, get my coffee in the morning. But he was always on point, always a gentleman, and really cared about this town.
Thank you, Tom, for bailing me out that I forgot to do that. So again, yes, we'd like to extend our condolences to the family. He was certainly a big figure here in town. He was certainly a big figure here in town. So, again, thank you, Tom. And so now we are, really are, on to adjourning. So is there a motion?
(inaudible).
And a second?
(inaudible).
And all those in favor?